Uh, go. Okay, alright, I'll call you when it's done. We're all set. This is the Village of Peatone Committee of the Whole Meeting for September 22nd, 2014. I ask, I'm calling this to order and I ask the clerk to please take attendance.
Mr. Recker, and Mr. Hupke.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Hack.
Here.
Mr. Callahan, and Mr. Forside.
Okay, noting for the record that Mr. Forside indicated he might be a little late to the meeting. Technically, because I get to vote when there's not enough, we do have a quorum. Okay, so a quorum is present. And having said that, we can conduct official business, the first order of which is the approval or correction of the last committee of the whole meeting minutes, which was August 25th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes as presented, or correct it if necessary? Motion. Second. Motion by trustee Hack, second by trustee Wicker, to accept the August 25th, 2014 Committee of the Whole Meeting minutes. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hack.
Yes.
And Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
And Mr. Hupke.
Present.
And President Duran.
Yes.
It works.
Does it?
The present will go with the eyes.
Thank you. Then the minutes are approved. I couldn't remember if that was the... Alright, on our agenda day today is a presentation, an update from the Buxton Group on our retail study and contract. So, I would like to introduce Mr. Eric Brown from Buxton, who's going to bring us up to date on where we are and answer questions that we have later.
Eric. I appreciate it, and I want to thank everybody for coming tonight, giving me the opportunity to walk through this information. When Mayor Duran and I spoke before, really the idea of today is to kind of walk through what I call roadmap, where we've been and where we're going, based on the current agreement in place, the analysis that we've done. So, just a brief agenda for what I've got for you all today. I'll do my best not to, you know, not to worry you to tears, I only have about 20, 24 slides. Really go through a brief introduction of who Buxton is, you know, for the benefit of those that might not have seen a presentation like this from Buxton before, I know Cody Howell has come and visited and met with the community. So, just a brief introduction of Buxton, then I want to kind of take a step back, where have we been? Do a review of the previous analysis from 2013, and then we'll talk a little bit about the 2014 analysis that's on deck, and then follow up with next steps from there. You know, if at any moment there are questions throughout the presentation, I'd be more than happy to stop, answer questions during, it's totally fine, so please don't hesitate to stop me. But just a little bit about Buxton, you know, Buxton is a consumer analytics company. We work, our foundation really has been working with retailers. We've been in business, this is our 20th anniversary year. Really, again, our foundation is helping retailers, all shapes and sizes, and restaurants, find out who their best customers are, where to find more that look just like them, and the value of their customers should they open a new location at any site in America. So, you know, we've worked with groups like GameStop, Applebee's, Garter Ridge, Trader Joe's, signed up with us to help their eastward expansion, because they're ready to move on from the California market, or at least expand eastward. So, just a couple examples of those. What you're seeing here on this slide is a sample, really, of our impact in the United States. In 2013, our retail clients evaluated over 80,000 locations across the entire United States, and through those evaluations, they opened 7,500 stores, and they did so intelligently, knowing exactly what that site would do, in terms of revenue. So, what we've been able to do is actually, for the past 12 years, reverse engineer this approach to help communities attract retail. So, we've worked with over 650 communities, recruit over 350 million square feet of retail space in the past 12 years. We've worked with a community in Kingsport, Tennessee, they've increased their sales tax revenue by, you know, for the past three years in the magnitude of millions of dollars. Salina, Texas, actually somewhat similar to Peatone in its population, population density, proximity to a much larger market. They worked with us to help really jumpstart their retail endeavors. We've been recognized in this marketplace for a number of awards, and we were number two on the Fast Company, Fast 50. We actually won the Stevia Award for Most Innovative Company in 2013, and we're partners with ICMA. You know, I'm not showing you this slide to brag, this is just to let you know that we're not two guys in a garage. We have 120 dedicated personnel at our headquarters in Fort Worth to help you. And, you know, kind of with that, that support that you have, I want to talk a little bit about myself. I've been with Buxton for over three years now, got my background actually working with our retail clients. So, I started working with our communities at the beginning of this year, really parlaying that experience I got with our retail clients and helping our communities grow. So, I've been very excited to do that, it's been a great challenge. So, just a little reminder about the analysis that we did in 2013. Really, the outset, the objective of that was to help the Village of Peatone understand the retail economic condition, what is the opportunity to recruit retail to the community? And of course, through tools like Scout, ongoing access to our databases, help you provide information to your existing businesses so you can retain current business, give them the same data that any, any thousand unit retailer would be using in the country. So, that was the initial objective, and really, again, our solution to doing so is to run a market-specific analysis to help you identify which specific retailers are the best fit, based on household purchasing habits, a number of other different data points I'll talk about shortly. And then, it's not just the analysis, the goal of Buxton Partnership is to help you implement those answers, so not just give you a list of 20 retailers and say, "Here you go." We provide you with marketing materials, contact information to those retailers, to really help you implement this strategy. So, really, it's a pretty simple formula, how we get to that list of 20 retailers. Really, what we look at first is a drive time trade area, and I'll talk a little bit more about how that's formulated here in a little bit. Then we look at the households that are within that drive time trade area. We're looking at all sorts of variables, so who people are, how they live their lives, and spend their money. And this really helps us identify what your trade area's unique thumbprint looks like as compared to the profile of any retailer, because we have a database of over 5,000 retailer profiles, and we can match your community to them to really identify where that fit is occurring. So, let's talk a little bit about the drive time trade area. The drive time trade area really identifies how far in minutes customers are willing to drive from point A to point B to consume goods and services. So, for the Village of Peatone, we identified that the day in and day out sustainable consumer lives within 12 minutes. You can see an image of that there on the map, really how far 12 minutes is going out and capturing. And this 12-minute boundary is really established using a number of different variables, it's a software. It factors in existing retail within the community, population, density, road networks, workplace population, traffic volumes, all of that is boiled into that shape you're seeing on the slide there. So, again, that's really, that's really what we'll call our study area, that 12-minute drive time polygon. Next, we want to look at the consumer profiles. Who's living in that red shape? The way we do this is by use of a segmentation system. So, what is segmentation? Segmentation is really identifying that we need to go a lot deeper than demographics. Demographics are great, they tell us age, income, ethnicity, education, all that good stuff, but you could put two people right next to each other that look the same demographically, but behave entirely differently in their day-to-day lives, and we call that psychographics. Like I mentioned earlier, how do I live my life and spend my money? So, what you're seeing on this slide is 71 bars, each representing one of the 71 psychographic segments within the United States. This is a profile of the United States you're seeing here. Just to help orient a little bit what you're seeing on the slide, I've applied an income trend line. So, those households, those segments, on the left-hand side of the chart are more affluent, tend to be more affluent than those on the right. So, income is just one variable that we're looking at, though, again, we want to get beyond demographics. Let's take one of these segments, for example. They're called segment D-15, sports utility families. Every 70, every one of these 71 segments has a code and a cute little name to it, but when you really start peeling back the layers, you can see that these are upscale, middle-aged couples with school-aged children, living active family lifestyles in outlying suburbs. The American population is made up of just over 2% of these types of households. The reason I'm calling this household, this segment out is because this is a large segment of Peatone's population. I'll show you exactly how much here very shortly. But some other characteristics that make up who these folks are, again, getting beyond demographics, these folks are married with kids in a household, they index for a 332. What does that mean? Well, if they index for 100, that would just mean the national average. These folks are over 3.3 times as likely to have a, to be married with kids in a household. They are almost three times as likely as the average household to be receptive to email and direct mail. So, if a retailer was to market to them, that would be an ideal channel to communicate to them, too. Two and a half times as likely to be, for someone in the house to be Republican. 2.3 times as likely they have bought play sports equipment. These are just, this is just a little snippet of the number of things that are being evaluated to determine who this D-15 is. Now, this is the consumer profile for the 12-minute trade area here in Peatone, so at that intersection I-57 Wilmington. So, you can see that segment D-15, where they're just shy of two, or just over 2% nationally, they're closer to 12% for you. So, this is a, this is a pretty profound finding when you're talking to a retailer, because a retailer wants to know who's living there, what are they going to be interested in purchasing, goods and services, restaurants? You know, if I'm, if I'm a restaurant, I want to know that there's a family that's got, many families that have five-plus more people in the household, that are interested in dining out, so on and so forth. Where we take this from here is to look at who we call your dominant segments. So, you can see every single one of the 71 segments is represented somehow in the Village of Peatone, but we really want to only look at those that are dominant. So, we basically set a threshold, unless a segment reaches at least 3%, it's not a dominant segment. So, what you can see here is the list of all of those segments that are over 3% within the trade area. Again, you can see this D-15, almost 12% of your trade area is made up of these sports utility families. Your second highest here is E-21 Unspoiled Splendor. You also have Babies &amp; Bliss. Again, these all have, again, little, cute little monikers, but we've equipped the village with a tool, an online tool, that allows you to go in and get a deep dive information on any one of these segments. So, you can identify what their financial circumstances are, are they likely to be investors, and what is their disposable income, what is their education, so on and so forth. So, you have that tool at your disposal, but our analysis leverages this profile, and we match this profile to the profiles, like I said, of over 5,000 retailers, to determine which retailers are the best fit for the village. So, in 2013, actually toward the end of October, we came up with a retail match list of all of the retailers that looked like the Village of Peatone, based on the consumer profile. I've embedded that information here, I'm not going to open it right away unless anybody would like to at the end, kind of go through that, but really, again, the idea was we fit your thumbprint to the thumbprint of over 5,000 retailers, to see who is the best fit. Now, again, that's just the analysis. What we really want to do at that, after that's done, is implement. We want to, we want to bring retail to the community. So, first and foremost, we're going to actually send a warm-up letter to that, well, let me backtrack, we did send up, send a warm-up letter to these retailers at the end of the analysis, to say, "The village is interested in recruiting retail, they've done their homework with Buxton, you should expect somebody to contact you." We've also provided you all with the contact information to get in touch with these real estate decision-makers. Again, these are not just your, this is not just your low-level retail decision-maker, not the regional contact, this is going to be the, we basically have a start-from-the-top approach, and we find that works very well, typically because if a vice president or executive of real estate is going to get that message, they'll probably tell one of their subordinates to follow up on it, as opposed to that subordinate just ignoring you if it came directly to them. So, we provide you with decision-maker level contacts. And then, of course, we have our ongoing partnership, through our Scout system, providing ongoing training in that tool, how to use it, how to best apply the solutions there, but again, how to get to all that data that you can provide to your local businesses. We support you at trade shows, you know, for instance, we will be moving forward here to the ICSC show here in Chicago. I look forward to providing a list of all of the retailers that are going to be there, all of their contact information, and then we can wheel down those that look best like the profile, and who has the best propensity to actually put a store here in Peatone. We're open to doing additional research as needed, so if there's a retailer that didn't meet your match list, we can identify why. We can talk about, and even if they didn't, we're open to providing contact information for them if you'd like to reach out and start telling that story. Helping you understand, hey, maybe why, does it make sense for a hotel to be there? We're interested in recruiting, or increasing our healthcare provider needs here in the community, we can help with that type of research. And of course, supporting conversations with retailers, really, you know, again, I started with the team at the beginning of this year, and with the idea that we are absolutely increasing support for our partners, I am 100% open to sitting on phone calls with retailers to explain this analysis that we did, to be copied, blind copied on emails, to, you know, help with those conversations. So, again, those are some of the bullets kind of covering how we're implementing this tool. So, moving forward, let's talk about what we're looking forward to doing here in 2014. So, the first round, the first analysis is about a year old now. So, what we're going to do is we're, we've actually spent the better part of this last year internally, and I've been, I've been very excited and proud to be a part of this project, bolstering our existing solutions. So, the equation has been expanded here a little bit. We're not only looking at your drive time trade area and consumer profile any longer, we're looking at all of the other retail market conditions that are present on the ground, and factoring those in. So, we're really taking this a much, much deeper dive than we did in 2013. We're evaluating competition at a much more, much deeper level than we did. We, it was definitely a factor in the 2013 analysis, but now it's automated, it's built into the tool, to where we're not only looking at the proximity of a retailer's competitors, we're looking at how a competitor might overlap with the trade area and the share of households that's occurring within that overlap. We're looking at area draw factors, so are there grocery stores, big boxes, malls, even colleges and other schools, casinos, anything that might draw foot traffic to a region, we're factoring that in to the analysis, where it wasn't necessarily factored tremendously in the last analysis. And of course, we want to look at an accessibility factor, so we're going to be looking at the quality of roads. Essentially, rescoring that site this year, you're going to get, you're going to get a boost for being right there on 57. You're going to get a much higher, much higher credit here for having higher traffic, distance to nearest highway, distance to nearest interstate. These are all variables that are now built into the model, whereas they were not before, and we're very confident that that's going to give you an even, an even sharper, more pinpointed list than before. So, when looking at next steps with this analysis, we'll be providing you with redesigned match reports. These are, this is a one-page tool that the village can hand the retailer and show them, "Here's why I'm a match, because we have the right customers, we have the right accessibility, there's not too much competition here, the right things are bringing people and traffic into the area." And then, we're also on that redesigned match report, showing them what comparable stores look like, so who are their stores that look most like Peatone? So, a one-pager designed to really entice that retailer. We've reformatted our complete retailer pursuit package, this includes the match report within, but it's also a way that we've done the retailer's homework for them. It's about a 12-page document that includes a number of maps that that retailer would want to be looking at, so dot densities of population, income, thematics, various things that that retailer would be collecting anyway. We've gone ahead and done that homework for them, as a tool for you to make their job a little bit easier. Again, we've refined the results of our process here, so as opposed to giving you a long laundry list that you have to sort through and determine which retailers you want to go after, we're going to laser focus this into 20 of the best retailers. We're now able to sort and rank who the best possible retailers are going to be. And then, of course, continued trade show support, so I mentioned earlier, the ICSC Chicago event here coming up in a couple of weeks, a deal-making event. We will, you know, we are going to be here to provide you with retailer contact information for any of the retailers that are going to be at that show, so that you can set meetings, because that's how you're successful at one of these shows, is setting meetings ahead of time. And then, of course, our overhaul Scout platform, which we've actually already implemented and provided you all with. So, we've transitioned in the past year from our Scout 2.0 environment to our Scout 3.0 environment. Scout is our web-based analytics platform, like I mentioned, that allows, allows the village to go in, conduct analysis, compare yourselves to other communities, and again, pull information out that's going to help your existing businesses, and give them the same data that a national retailer might use. So, those bullets are just a few enhancements that we've made with the new tool, it's mobile-friendly, you can run multiple reports at one time, enhance user controls and data manipulation. So, really, I know I breezed through that fairly quickly, but I'm sure there are a few questions, so I want to take the opportunity to address some of those.
Want to put the lights on? Alright, I've got one question to just kind of start this off. We have been cautious about using Scout in the sense of proprietary information, and I guess not fully understanding how much we can share that with, for example, the local businesses.
Sure.
What, what are the restrictions, or are there restrictions?
In short, there are none. You don't have any restrictions on this data. As it is, you know, it's essentially paid for by the, by the village. It's, you can use it and provide any, any of your citizens with the information as needed. So, it's, it's very common for, you know, a number of communities that I work with to provide local businesses, there's a, there's a report that you can get out of Scout that will tell you, use that same index measurement tool, like on the variables, it will tell you how, at what level do folks index for buying certain merchandise? So, I can tell you, should you, you know, at, you know, at the grocery store, should you be stocking Milwaukee's Best or Coors Light? Should you be doing, you know, Huggies or Love's diapers? So, you know, it's very helpful, you know, if you give it to a local tavern, he can, he can know what to put on tap. So, it helps reduce waste. So, that's very common that we see communities give that type of information to their local businesses.
Okay. We, I think we were suffering under the misunderstanding that this was more proprietary and than it really evidently is.
Well, and I would want to emphasize that, you know, of course, you, the, your user group should likely be village officials, you wouldn't want to just provide open access to the tool at the library or something, but, you know.
No.
It's, it's to that level, you know, be very comfortable sharing that data.
Okay. Alright. Trustee has other questions, please.
You said we can look it up for descriptions of the, like the B-08 and the C-14, but can you give a brief description for the Unspoiled Splendor?
Absolutely, I'm just going to pull that, well, let me get on the wifi here real quick. Is that the right wifi there, George?
You want Cisco.
Ah, perfect. Bear with me one moment, and we can walk through that.
Whoa, 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 let's, let's.
E21.
Yes.
communities, just at a high level. Well, you can see some of the imagery that represents those folks, but these are upper-middle class empty nesters, traditional in their outlook, rustic outdoor sports. They've got, they're conservative in their finances, they're favorable to coupons, they have an American-made mindset, very community-minded, price-conscious, and internet pragmatic. So if they see an opportunity on the internet, they'll go for it. Again, those are just some really high-level key traits. I can show you some of their most highly represented characteristics and low ones. So head of household's going to be between 51 and 65, visits sports fishing websites, married without kids in the household, head of household's occupation is farm-related, suburban, non-city lifestyle, of course. Let's see, leisure activities include bird watching. They do watch NASCAR on television. These are the characteristics that they least embody. Length of residence, one year or less. So in other words, these are very established families, couples. Underbanked, they are with a bank, they have finances, they have credit cards. They're not renters, they're owners. But, you know, as I mentioned, I can click this data tab and I can really peel into every single individual variable that makes up who they are. So I can look at the type of vehicle they drive. So these folks index the highest at a 161 for driving a full-size pickup. And then a little bit lesser so, a smaller truck. So I hope, I don't know, does that kind of paint a picture for you?
Yes, thank you.
And I'm sure that's not, I'm sure you've seen these folks about town. I'm sure it's not necessarily a revelation, but what this allows us to do is compare it to our database of retailers, which retailers care about E21s. So we're able to match that back.
Other questions? It appears as though we're weak in the area draw, so what's the solution to that?
So I wouldn't say that within this year's analysis that the area draw is necessarily going to be a hit. I would say that it's really going to be a plus in a lot of circumstances, but really, what it's meant to represent is we're going to go out, just like we did in last year's analysis, find retailers that have similar customers to yours. We're going to go find trade areas that have similar area draw characteristics to yours as well. So like you mentioned, whereas there could be more here, we're still going to go out and find retailers that are locating in areas that don't have a lot. So it really makes them a better fit overall because they're already placing themselves in locations that look like yours from that aspect.
You were saying that Salina, Texas is similar to us. What's the population of Salina, Texas?
So if memory serves, they are around 7,500 to 8,000 now? I think that's a little bit higher than you all, but they've actually, they've grown a lot and, you know, a few years ago, they were probably a little bit closer, but North Texas expansion has gone north and they're just due north of Dallas. So that's really kind of the way that market has just gone.
They've been a high-growth area.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Other questions, trustees?
What are your interactions with retailers and businesses? I know that you guys seemingly focused on getting municipalities on board with you. What about, what are your arrangements with different businesses? Do you have, do they shop through you the same way we shop through you?
It's a great question. So the answer is yes. We've been, we've been working with municipalities for the past 12 years, but our foundation really is working with retailers. We've been working with retailers for 20 years now. And so really, what a retailer does when they come to Buxton and they say, "Buxton, I need help," what they're saying is, "I want to, I want to find home-run locations, I want to avoid the underperformers, and I want to improve the performance of my existing locations." And the way we help them do that is by actually gathering as much of their data as possible. So their customer data, their sales data, their transaction data, and then marry that with our data. And like we've built a model for you all to determine which retailers are the best fit, we build a custom-fit model for their business to help them go into Scout and score any intersection in the entire United States. And they, when they score that intersection, it's going to give them a revenue forecast that basically says, "You're going to do X amount of dollars." And then at that point, they can say, "That's pretty good, let me look into that site a lot more closely." So that's kind of the solution for them.
So theoretically, you may be providing them our contact information as well, in some respects. You may be telling them, "There's this community here or this location that might fit your needs."
And that's, well, and that's exactly what we do when we partner with the municipality to run the solution. And in a lot of ways, actually, what we can do with the model that we build for them is we can even take a step further and run what we call the United States Potential. We can basically take that model and score hundreds of thousands of points across the entire United States and tell them which ones are the best. Here's where you should be looking. And so, you know, that's kind of the next level of that.
So to follow up on that, if I were in a company that wasn't necessarily located in the Midwest, but I wanted to break into that market, they could come to you and you would show that, you could demonstrate to them, here, within that market, here are the various places that meet your requirements for success.
Absolutely. And that's exactly what we did for Trader Joe's. You know, they've been mostly focused on the West Coast. Now they're ready to rock and roll in an Outburden. You know, they've been traditionally a West Coast company. Now they've made their Eastport expansion. We've been doing business with them for a number of years. So that, you know, a lot of companies have that approach. A lot of companies have an approach. One of our longest-term clients in the retail space, Sally Beauty Supply, they have thousands of locations. And their question is, gosh, how do I, how do I open up another store without dinging these two other ones? How do I, how do I improve the performance of these really underperformers? And we can take the same level customer insights, knowing how people shop, live their lives and spend their money, we can tell them which households they need to go market to and offer promotions to. So there are a lot of different applications, but that's kind of a sense for some of the things we might do for retailers.
You supplied us with a list of best matches, and you also said that you sent them the warm-up letter following your study. And you said the next step after that is you provided us with contact information for follow-ups on that. Have we followed up on those?
We had sent packages to all of the 20 things on there and really gotten no response.
Yeah, the ICSC conference is, I think, 7th and 8th of October. We'll be attending that. We've already had discussions with Buxton about partnering with us on that, so that's where the retailers will be.
And more to the point on that, they do another conference, annual conference, I think it's in April in Las Vegas.
That's right.
But this one in Chicago is more of the folks who are in this region, serving this region. So we're more likely to find the specific contact that we would be dealing with by trying to set up appointments there, which is what we're going to be trying to do within the next two weeks.
Yeah, the typical structure of a given retailer's real estate department is going, they'll have a vice president overseeing the group, and then they'll have, you know, depending on the size of the retailer, five to 15 directors of real estate. And those directors of real estate are going to be responsible for regions. So in a lot of cases at this show in Chicago, we'll see a lot of those regional players in attendance. We'll look forward to setting up meetings with them.
I think it's fair to say we're rather hopeful that having some face-to-faces will result in better, better final results, getting more retail to attract in this area.
Yeah, I think that absolutely holds true. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, connecting with these retailers, getting on their radar, setting the foundation for them understanding what the story and the village is, that's, I guess, really where we're at now, and that's a good place to be. Typically, a retailer is going to have their store build-out plans 18 to 24 months in advance. So where we're at in our process is really only about, we'll just shy it, well, about 12 months in, the contract, I believe, is 12 months in. So, you know, we're at a great place because we're reaching out, we're telling the story, letting them know that we've done our homework, getting ready to do a refresh with new data. So it's really just kind of an ongoing relentless process. And again, that's really why I'm here in the first place, is to kind of help guide along in that process.
Okay. So if I could ask you to expand upon that, again, the time sequence of we've made the contacts and the likelihood of a store opening is typically what range?
Well, it's a great question, and there are a lot of dependencies there. It would be unlikely, had you made a contact with a retailer in November 1, really when we delivered the list, and then even made the initial contacts a couple of weeks out, for them to have opened up a store by now if they weren't already looking here. So it's really, you know, again, it's about being proactive, getting on their radar where maybe you weren't before. But, you know, to your question, it's, you know, the typical, like I said, the typical real estate life cycle is I'm going to begin looking at a store and then I'm going to get it in my store pipeline. And it can take well over a year for that to really occur. So like I said, they plan 18 to 24, sometimes 36 months in advance. We have data on how many anticipated openings certain retailers are going to have, and sometimes they've got it projected out to 2017, so.
And a lot is also dependent upon the economy at the time.
Well, absolutely. I mean, you know, we're coming out of the recession which hurt everybody and especially retailers, especially communities. And, you know, these folks are, these retailers are really gearing up opening stores again. So, which is good, it's great, but I mean, that, the recession really, really grounds store openings to a halt, so. And I think, I think one of the points too is that retailers are risk averse. They're not pioneers. They're not going to go somewhere where they're not reasonably comfortable with earning a certain amount of revenue or at least a certain amount of profit. Maybe they can get a deal on the real estate. Maybe, you know, community incentives are always, or sometimes part of the conversation, but they're not pioneers. So if it looked risky during the recession, they're not going to do it. If it looked risky coming out, probably not going to do it. It's all about, it's all about telling every piece of that story.
Trustees, quit more questions?
With respect to the retailer list that we were given, I think the top 20 here, one of the things that comes to mind when I look through it is a lot of these entities are likely franchise businesses. What is the, what is the interaction between sending come-to-peatone letters to the corporate headquarters? How does that interact with them, with franchises coming?
Yeah.
What's the interaction or the relationship between the two?
It's a really, really good question. So most franchise concepts are going to have a leg in which they'll, they'll open corporate stores. But our model is not built off of the corporate store model, it's built off of their entire store network. So really, in a lot of cases, what I've found in working with communities who are reaching out to franchise concepts is, you know, sometimes that franchise concept is going to say, "That sounds great, we'd love to do that." Do you have somebody who's going to open a store?
Okay.
That's the next part of the story. That's the next part of the question. And really, and again, you know, we can do our best at our office to help supply you with the right data points that you could share with local entrepreneurs, other folks that already have franchises or nearby franchises. Oftentimes, franchisees operate in a region or a territory. So, you know, you might, you might call, you might call somebody who owns the franchises down the road, and they might, they might be willing to open up another store here. You know, it's almost, you know, we talked about retail recruitment. In a lot of ways, when you're talking about franchise concept, it's franchisee recruitment. I need to find somebody who's willing to, willing to...
Open one of these businesses.
Willing to open the business. And, you know, we've had, we've had some case studies with communities, Hesperia, California, for example. They actually ran an incentive program for folks that were willing to do that. So there's a lot of ways to kind of slice it, but it's a great question and it kind of, it's a different animal.
Okay, but related to that is the fact that we can demonstrate from our profile that we are a potentially successful site rather than on a whim, a franchisee trying to, franchiser, whatever it is, trying to pick the place they would like to expand to.
That's absolutely true. And, you know, if, I hate to, I hate to use generalizations, but I would be surprised if that franchisee had that level of information when they opened up some of their existing stores already. You know, we work with a number of retailers, we don't work with every retailer, and not every retailer uses data or analytics to this level. Some, a lot of them still rely on demographics at three-mile rings, you know? So it wouldn't be unbelievable to me if you were to present it to a franchisee and pretty much knock their socks off because it's in-depth analysis.
Do corporations that have franchises encourage? If I were to go to a corporation and say, "I'm looking at opening a franchise, I'm just not sure where," do they interact with that franchisee saying, "Well, this might be a good location?" Or in fact, do they restrict where they'll allow their own name to be opened?
It's a great question. So in a lot of cases, franchise concepts are going to operate in terms of selling you, there's dependencies, but they'll sell you a territory.
Okay.
And you can open up a number of locations within that territory. It's very rare that they're going to say you have to open at this location. Now, a lot of franchise organizations are going to have their own site selection team, but again, they still might be relying on some, I'm not going to say antiquated, but older, older tools and metrics. But I'll give you an example, actually, my gym at home. It's an Anytime Fitness. And I talked to, I talked to them a lot about why they decided to locate where they decided to locate. And they're like, "Look, they completely ignored the site selection guy at corporate. They knew the store, they knew the space they wanted to go into, and they opened it and, you know, they're knocking it out of the park and it's great." So there might be some certain encouragements from corporate to do a certain thing, and corporate likes their franchisees to leverage their developer and broker networks too. So there's, it opens up a lot of different kinds of scenarios. Now, I will say this on the franchise side, that where you actually might have some, you're going to have extra hoops to jump through, but improving that your location is a good location might not be as difficult, and here's why. A corporate franchise concept, their initial question to Buxton might not always be, "Where do I open home-run locations?" It's maybe, "Where do I open good enough locations?" And so you could, in a sense, get a great logo, great services to the community, a little bit easier because they're willing to take a little bit more risk because it's a franchisee opening up the store. So there could be some opportunity there. Just wanted to kind of throw that extra...
league affiliations, looking to put a stadium somewhere, stuff like that, on that scale? Or are we limited to retail?
I would use this for that all day, absolutely.
Well, the better question is, how do we get that out to them? You've given us the list for the retailers, which is great, but as far as those people go, how do we get that?
You know, it's a great question. That, again, our expertise is in retail. I don't have contacts for that type of thing, just honestly. I could do everything I could to help figure that out. You know, we're pretty resourceful and can get to some of that if we put our mind to it. But off the hip, I couldn't tell you who to call. But I would absolutely use some of this information once we do make that contact, because it's compelling.
Other questions? We're ready for the lights.
I'll take a sip of water.
Thank you, Eric.
Sure.
And as Eric pointed out, George and I are signed up, I'll finish mine tomorrow, to do the conference at, the Regional Retail Conference at Navy Pier, October 7 and 8, and we'll be working with Buxton to try and make appointments to see some of the folks that we make, we are matches with, and talk to their regional people. And to Eric's credit, Eric just came on with us, what, April or somewhere around there?
Yeah, really probably got more engaged around March, April.
Yeah. And in just that short a time, we've gotten a lot more work back and forth, a lot more conversations, and I want to thank him for that. He's also made himself readily available for a lot of things that I think are going to help move us more so than we've moved in the past year, simply because of the availability there. And this is an education thing for all of us, okay? So thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
You ran out of paper. There was a gentleman in the back of the room who had walked in.
It was Mr. Presto from across the street.
Oh. I didn't know whether or not he wanted to address us.
He'll probably come back. He looked out the window and then he, Eric, that's the engineer.
Okay. So we're about seven minutes away from our next meeting, and I would simply ask, is there anything in the category of general discussion that any of the trustees want to bring up before we adjourn this?
So I've got a couple of things, trying to make it as quick as possible. There's an excessive amount of rubbish behind, these are just some of the pictures I want to pass around to the trustees, behind 209 North Second Street that needs to be addressed. One in particular is the trailer van that's pictured here. It's a safety concern, it could be accessed by children. At the time while I was there taking this photograph, there was actually children playing in the back. It needs to be removed and not covered. Also, there's a lot of rubbish that's not any part of any remodeling going on. There's vehicles and trailers, and according to code, are not allowed to be parked on any unimproved surfaces. There's a large white trailer that's parked on the north side of the building. Also, there's tires, which you can see the photographs, that are a breeding ground for mosquitoes. It just looks like it's just a dumping ground.
Okay. We will refer this to Mike, the inspector.
What follow-up?
There's also a for-sale sign on a property of blue, on the corner of Blue Devil Drive and West Street. And according to code, our ordinance 153.07 signs in a residential district, which is our 4B paragraph, that's exceed four square feet, seems to be at least six foot by eight foot.
Okay. Thanks for putting that out. We will look into it and get back to you.
This is for the chief, I just, or anybody here. I'm just curious if the tractor trailer that parks in our newly-acquired lot, the Bennett has permission to park there? It's always parked there? The license plate and the owner also. It is a Piaton resident, which I do have the plate number for the pickup truck that's in my vehicle, that drives the vehicle, if you need to also have that. One last thing. It's our newly-acquired property, it looks like it could be, okay, a bit of a cleanup. There's, the pictures show there's a piece of barbed wire hanging down which poses a hazard. There's also piles of brush and large rocks and smaller boulders that appear to be dumped by a party of parties unknown. There appears to be some asphalt patch piled up. Also, it's in need of a cleanup. It's not only for the appearance side, but it's also because of the safety concerns.
Okay. We'll look into that and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Any other trustees, anything else?
Gentlemen, once everybody's had a chance to see those, I could have them back for files.
Hearing done and seeing no one else from the public forecome, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting for September 22, 2014.
Motion.
Second. Motion by trustee Forsythe, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to adjourn the September 22, 2014 committee of the whole meeting. Court, please call the court roll.
Mr. Forsythe.
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey.
Yes.